Call the meeting to order for Wycomico County Council Legislative Session 2017-23, October 3, 2017. For those who'd like to stand and join us in the Lord's Prayer and Pledge of Allegiance, please do.
Amen.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda will approve the legislative minutes for September 19, 2017. Entertain a motion, please.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion or corrections? Seeing none. All those in favor approving the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Minutes are approved. Entertain a motion to approve the open work session minutes from August 1, 2017 in reference to the Personnel Manual.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion or corrections? Seeing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Minutes are approved. Entertain a motion to approve the open work session minutes from August 1, 2017 in reference to airport improvements and rebranding.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any corrections? Seeing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Minutes are approved. Entertain a motion to approve the open work session minutes from August 1, 2017 in reference to the Personnel Manual.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion or corrections? Seeing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Minutes are approved. Entertain a motion to approve the open work session minutes from August 1, 2017 in reference to airport improvements and rebranding.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any corrections? Seeing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Minutes are approved. Entertain a motion to approve the open work session minutes from August 1, 2017, the review of the fiscal year 2017 audit process.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion or corrections? Seeing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Minutes are approved. Good evening, Mr. Taylor. How are you?
Good evening. This is Legislative Bill Number 2017-10. It was introduced September 5, 2017 by the President of the Council at the request of the County Executive. It is an act to authorize and empower Wycomico County, Maryland to borrow on the faith and credit of Wycomico County, Maryland, an aggregate principal amount not exceeding $10 million, and to evidence such borrowing by the issue and sale from time to time of one or more series of general obligation bonds of the county, the proceeds thereof to be used by Wycomico County to refinance or reimburse the costs of certain projects for the Board of Education of Wycomico County, General Services, the Sheriff's Office, and the Roads Department, including costs of planning, design, acquisition, construction, improvement, installation, renovation, rehabilitation, repairing, furnishing, and equipping of land, facilities, building, and structures, together with other costs and financing costs related thereto. And I'm stopping at this point on the preamble. I can continue if you would like me to. It'd be about three times longer than what I've already said.
That's good. Thank you very much, Mr. Taylor. At this time, we open the floor for the public hearing on Legislative Bill Number 2017-10. If you have any comments that you'd like to state in reference to this legislative bill, come to the podium, please, and state your name, address, and your concerns. That concludes the public hearing on Legislative Bill Number 2017-10. Entertain a motion from the Council to approve Legislative Bill Number 2017-10. We'll start on my right with Councilman Matt Holloway.
Aye.
Councilman Ernie Davis.
Aye.
Councilman Joe Holloway.
Aye.
Councilman John Hall.
Aye.
Councilman Mark Kilmer.
Aye.
Vice President Larry Dodd.
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye. Legislative Bill Number 2017-10 is approved unanimously. Good evening, Mrs. Hurley. How are you?
Good evening, Mr. President, County Council members, ladies and gentlemen. We have one announcement to make this evening, and that is the closed work session on a matter relating to a negotiating strategy will not be held tonight.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is Resolution Number 126, 2017. It's a public hearing on adopting the 2017 Wycomico County Land Preservation Parks and Recreation Plan.
At this time, we open the floor for Resolution Number 126, 2017. If you have any comments that you'd like to make in reference to this resolution, come to the podium, please, state your name and your address and your concerns. This concludes the public hearing on Resolution Number 126, 2017. Entertain a motion from Council to approve Resolution 126, 2017.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? I know we've had work sessions on this. Mr. Miller's here. How are you? All those in favor of Resolution 126, 2017, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Resolution passes.
Next on the agenda is the Wycomico County Economic Impact Scholarship Program Review by Mr. Brian Newton, Vice President for Enrollment Management and Student Services at Warwick Community College.
Good evening, Mr. Newton. How are you?
Good evening. How are you?
Great, thank you.
What I thought I would do is, you obviously have the report for 26, 2017, was give you just a few brief highlights and, of course, take your questions about the program this past year. Just as you remember that this is a last dollar funding program and that we are using all available resources for these students before county funds are allocated for the Wycomico Economic Impact Scholarship Program. We refer to it around the college twice, so I'll do that tonight in the interest of time. If you'll remember, this program was designed to assist students that were having difficulty funding their college education, but also to promote to students throughout our local school system and at our home schools and private schools the opportunity to pursue a free college education, whether that be through dollars allocated by the county or other resources, particularly federal resources that are available, and of course, as we've talked about before, provide an educated workforce for economic development in Wycomico County. In 2016, 2017, there were 131 applications. We had 84 students in the cohort that were eligible. Now, again, the last dollar funding meant that most of those students were taken care of through other resources and that for the year, at the beginning of the fall of 2016, there were 25 students that were eligible for some or all funding from the county program. At the end of the fall, there were 67 students that had completed some college credits, and 43 students had met the eligibility requirements to continue. And remember, those eligibility requirements were that the student had to complete 12 credits in the semester, and they had to maintain a 2.0 grade average. And so, at the end of the fall, 43 students were eligible from the cohort, but 15 students that were receiving county funding out of those 25 initial students were eligible to continue in the program. In the spring, there were 36 students in the cohort that completed some college credits, and there were 30 students eligible to continue at the end of spring into this next fall of 2017. There were 10 Y students at the end of the spring that were eligible to continue this coming semester, and there was actually one student that came into the program after the end of the year. As you'll recall in the resolution, there was a provision that a student that completed 24 or more credits on their own in the first year and maintained a 2.0 GPA could come into the program the second year if they had not applied the first year. And we did have one student that met that provision and is coming in after completing credits and maintaining the GPA in 2016, 2017. So at the end of the year, we have a total of 1,166 college credits completed. And if you'll recall, I mentioned this the last time you were here, but individuals that do complete some college credits are going to be in a much better position even if they don't have a degree or certificate in the long term. Studies show that they're 17% more likely -- I'm sorry, they'll pay an estimated 17% more in taxes during their lifetime and take home 12% more than high school graduates who are working full-time. So even if they haven't yet completed a degree, we have students who have completed 1,166 college credits this year. At the end of the year, we spent much less than we had originally forecasted because so many students were using last dollar funding and were not using county dollars. So there was a total for the two semesters plus the dual enrollment reimbursement. Remember that students that completed 24, maintained a 2, and had dual enrollment credits in high school were eligible for reimbursement of those dollars that they spent out of their pocket at the end of the year. So all those things combined, we spent a total of $39,037.42 on the two semesters plus dual enrollment reimbursement. Just two pieces moving forward. One, of course, and as I've talked to you before, and it's a position of the college that we would like to see the income cap of $75,000 removed so that more middle-class families can afford college. The program that we have in Somerset County that's being funded by state dollars has no income cap, and that program has just started here in the fall of '17. And we also have requests throughout this year for folks that wanted to pursue workforce development programs in our Continuing Education Division. Those are non-credit courses that don't lead to a degree, but they lead to often a quick start in the workforce. And so, those kind of career starter programs, things such as CNAs, welders, truck drivers, photobottomists, et cetera, we had students that wanted to take that route that came to us through the application process. And obviously, this program is only for students who are pursuing a degree. So as we look at the program for the future, there might be an opportunity to allocate some funds for those purposes so that students can spend a few weeks or, you know, three to six months completing that workforce development program and then going directly into the workforce from Warwick. So those are the highlights of what I've given you in the report. And to take your questions, please.
Questions from Council. Matt?
Are there other funding options for the workforce development type courses that are available to those students? Yeah. They're not eligible for federal financial aid. There are some dollars that we have as part of grants that we've received. Our local United Way of the Lower East Shore provided $20,000 to us last year for these students to defray some of their costs. But what often we see with our non-credit students is they sometimes don't have everything to pay for that class right then and there, and since there is no assistance, some of these programs can be costly. For example, the truck driving program is going to cost you a small amount of tuition, but about $3,000 and something in fees. They range these programs from the hundreds of dollars to the thousands of dollars, and that's often something that a student without financial aid can't just put on their credit card or has the resources to take care of. But we do have a little bit of money, but nowhere's near the amount of money we have from credit students through federal financial aid.
So I've heard folks say that the 84 people that were in the original cohort, that those are, as you would say, additional students that wouldn't have come to Warwick otherwise. Is that something that the college says, or are these people who would have possibly come, you know, from high school otherwise, but they were just told about this opportunity?
I don't think we know that yet. Certainly, in this first year, remember, the application period was very brief. And so, I think you approved it on June 21 of 2016. We had an August 1 deadline. So presumably, many students that had already decided that they were going to come to college had made up their mind before this program had even been approved for this year. I think we need to survey our students who are in the program to find that out. That's not something that we've done. But I presume it's a mix. I think you're going to get a mix of students who were going to Warwick anyway and are going to be part of this program because they're eligible because of their income and because of the number of credits they're taking. And then you're going to have some students who, but for this program, are going to come to us. And I think what we see is the opportunity to promote free community college, even though for the most part, those funds are going to be taken from federal and/or state or other sources, is an opportunity to try to increase educational attainment in the county. We certainly saw that, at least in the application process, if that's one small indicator. In that brief time last year, we had 131 applications. We had 183 for the 2017 cohort going into Fall '17. So hopefully, that's an indicator that more people are interested in this program and are interested in coming to Warwick to take advantage of this.
And it seems that, so, you know, you have 84, and then only 25 receives county funding, and the rest receive Pell Grants or other aid. Now, before this, you didn't -- they didn't have -- students coming to the school didn't have to fill out financial aid forms. I mean, they could, but they didn't have to. In this program, they have to fill out the form to find out if they're eligible.
They have to in this program. For the most part, we encourage students to fill out the FAFSA because that's the gateway to any aid, whether it be federal aid or getting some sort of state or other. Often, private scholarships require the FAFSA to be filled out first. But I think what it does is it, you know, the students who were lower-income students were going to receive Pell anyway, and then those students that are getting closer to that $75,000 income cap are the students that are going to, after the FAFSA's completed, are going to end up receiving some benefit from this program. And remember that it's not a straight income determination, that there are a variety of factors on the FAFSA that go into determining whether they'll be -- will they'll be receiving full aid or not, things such as how many students they have in college at the same time, other assets that they may have. You know, we look at, you know, things such as child support. We look at, you know, investment income, those type of things. All go -- are all part of the 90-something questions that are on the FAFSA that go into the federal formula for determining whether they'll receive aid or not.
So, I mean, it does seem, though, that, I mean, the numbers show that, you know, the people you count as part of this cohort, the vast majority would have received aid whether or not -- would have been eligible for aid, whether or not the county program itself would have existed had they applied, you know, had they completed FAFSA and got through that process.
Certainly.
So, because there were 25 that initially applied and got some county money, and now we're down to, I guess, 11 over the course of a year.
11 that will, in the coming year, be -- are eligible and will be receiving funds from the county.
So that's about 56% washout rate, for lack of a better term, over the, I mean, you know, I mean, it's more than half of the people didn't -- that received county money didn't persist. I mean, do we know the reasons why?
It's a variety of reasons, certainly, for some. And we experienced this after the first semester of the program. Some students just told us they couldn't do full-time. They tried full-time, but with other obligations, whether it be work or whether it be family pressures, et cetera, they just couldn't continue. There were some students out of that originally 84 that transferred in the fall. We do not yet have students from the spring. We do not have the information yet from those that completed the spring of whether they transferred to a four-year university or not. So there's certainly some students that had ended up at SU or UMES or other places. There are some students that didn't meet the academic eligibility requirements, and I think that's part of what we need to remember with this program, is you've set pretty strict requirements for continuing in the program. They have to be registered for 12 credits, and they have to be maintaining that GPA. Otherwise, the funding, at least from county sources, stops. Now, it doesn't mean that the federal aid stops or any other aid that they might be receiving. So I wouldn't necessarily refer to it as a washing out of students. There's a variety of reasons as to why they may not be continuing. And again, they're not continuing in this program. It doesn't mean they're not continuing in college. Some of the students who were in that 84 at the beginning, they came back to us in the spring, but were taking less credits. I mean, these students are atypical, in many ways, of Warwick students. I mean, our average age is 25 years old. 27% of our students are full-time versus part-time. The average credit load for our students is eight credits versus 12. So in many ways, they're not a typical community college student, but we set the program up this way so that momentum from high school would continue into going immediately into college, and we wouldn't have the situation where the student decided that they just, you know, they missed the window for college after high school.
Well, I mean, I think, you know, I was opposed to this program, you know, and, you know, I had discussions with Dr. Hoy about this, in that, you know, it didn't seem to me from the research I'd done that tuition was the barrier to a lot of people completing community college, you know. And it seems that, you know, starting now with 84 and just the cohort, they'd even get Pell Grants, and renowned down to 24, and then, you know, 25 to 11, you know, there's free tuition, you know, I mean, quote-unquote, "free tuition", and they're still not able to maintain a 2.0 or maintain college credit. You know, there's other barriers to their success that doesn't come with tuition. I mean, that, you know, my argument with this was that this was poorly designed to meet the problems that the diversity of students you face, you know, that you serve, face, you know. And like you say, I mean, there's all these other things coming up that may be barriers. And so that, you know, I'm just, you know, looking at this data and seeing, you know, what, why aren't these people with free tuition, you know, able to maintain 2.0, or, you know, why aren't they able to maintain 12 hours? You know, what is the issue here that maybe would be better, you know, a better way to address some of these issues so we don't have people, you know, using, you know, federal grants or county grants and then, you know, only completing a little bit, you know, a semester of college or something like that?
Yeah, I think there are a variety of factors, probably, and your statements about there being a variety of barriers to student -- community college students are exactly right. You ask any community college administrator or faculty member, there are untold barriers to completing their education, remembering that, you know, community colleges serve a different population of students than selective institutions, that those students are that are attending, often not all, but, you know, that on average, those students who are attending SU or other four-year institutions are going to have a higher GPA. They're going to come from circumstances in their background that are more amenable to succeeding in a higher education environment, whether it's their poverty level, family status, prior success in high school, et cetera. I don't think that that negates the value of the program and the purpose of the program. Again, remembering that, you know, the students that we are getting through this program, even those who aren't going to come out of Warwick with a completed degree or certificate, are going to be in a much better position in the local economy because of this program and because of the opportunity to be able to complete college credits with us.
Sure.
Good question.
Well, I've listened to your answers. I guess maybe you're going to use the same reasoning when I ask you this question. What's a dollar figure you can put on between the 25 and the 14 people, you know, that didn't complete the courses, the money that taxpayers spent to try to get them educated and they didn't use it?
I don't have that number. I can get that number for you, certainly. We know what we awarded to each student, so we can certainly give you that number.
The Community Foundation, who we sent money to, I know it was said that the reason it was done is so people could step up and donate money to the Community Foundation to further this program. Has that been -- has anybody donated any money in the name of this program to the Community Foundation?
I know that there have been, there were contributions made at the time the allocation was made. I remember there was a contribution by Avery Hall. I remember there was another contribution, and the contributor doesn't come to mind, but I don't have a full rundown of any dollars that the Community Foundation made.
So you don't know the amount of money that's still left in the fund?
I know the amount of money that's still left in the fund. Again, we have, there was $212,000 that was allocated to the fund from the county. I do know that there is, I believe it's with the $39,000.
So you take that away from the 212?
Take that away from the 212. I had the number here somewhere. I apologize.
But then you've had money given, too.
There's other money that's been given. The number remaining, at least in the county funds, was the 172, 963. But what the parameters of the money that was given, you know, were these funds that were set up to be endowment funds, and so it wouldn't be the whole contribution, obviously, that could be used, only the interest from that endowment fund. I don't have the answer to that. That would be a question that we would need to ask the Community Foundation.
Somerset, the state stepped up for Somerset. Do you find that to be a better program than Wycomico County's?
It's brand-new. We don't, I think what we know about the program is it doesn't have the income cap. Now, of course, Somerset County is a county that has a lower average income and those types of things per family, so you're going to have fewer families who are in that middle-class or higher-middle-class status that could take advantage of the program. But what we did see with the applicants that we had is that students that were maybe in that 75 or higher bracket could access the program, and those are students, again, that are sometimes struggling with college because, or funding for college because of multiple people in a family who are attending college, whatever their family income situation may be, et cetera. But yes, that's certainly what we would like to see. That's what we wanted that program to be, was one that did not have an income cap. And again, those students are just starting, so we don't know what their rates of success may be.
Would you find it to be easier if you had one program to deal with instead of two?
I'm not sure I --
You've got two different programs, so you've got two different sets of guidelines and?
Sure. There's a little difference between the programs. The only real difference, two differences in the programs are, one, the income cap, and, two, the dual enrollment reimbursement. There's no dual enrollment reimbursement in the Somerset County program. So, but yes, certainly, when you can --
So do you think if the state took over our program, it'd be easier to work with?
Well, we would certainly welcome the program being funded from a number of sources, but yes. And I understand that there are efforts being moved forward by state legislators on free community college, and there was last legislative session as well. So we'll see what happens with those programs. I know you would probably be thankful for that, but we want the program to continue regardless of where the funding comes.
Well, it's always easier if you have the same set of rules across the board.
Absolutely. Well, you're absolutely right about that. Absolutely.
All right. Thanks, Mark.
If I remember correctly, this was presented to us because there was a business that wouldn't come to Wycomico County because we didn't have a highly educated workforce. I think that was presented to us that way.
I think there may have been reference to that in the initial talk.
So that's basically how we were sold on this scholarship program that the taxpayers were going to pay for. And I encourage anybody to go to college. And at this rate, 11 students, is that a year? It doesn't look like we're going to get a very highly educated workforce that way. And I know there are a lot of reasons why people don't go, because they're working multiple jobs, they have kids, and I think all of us have been through that.
You have 800-something students that graduated from Wycomico schools, at least last year that graduated from Wycomico schools. You have some students, obviously, that have graduated either home school or private schools that could also be thrown in the mix. So again, we're not talking, we weren't ever talking about hundreds or thousands of students in terms of the numbers that would eventually end up completing a degree in this program. I guess I would look at it as a $39,000 investment. 11 students are on their way to a degree or certificate, whatever they've chosen, which will mean that those will be folks that will be ready to be employed here in the county, that will be paying taxes regardless of whether they complete or not. They're going to be paying, if you go by the research, more taxes than they would have with just a high school diploma. So I would look at it that way versus what you presented.
Those 11 students that are graduating, do you know where they're going?
We don't know yet because they haven't graduated. I mean, they're starting their second year, remembering that this is a program, that you have six semesters to complete your degree in this program. So, and that's typically, you know, it usually takes five semesters for, you know, four or five semesters for a student to complete their degree with us, if you're talking about a six-credit degree program.
Well, we met one student that was very excited about the program, but she was also excited that she was going to be moving to Baltimore, so that's not going to help us.
Yeah. I mean, remember, you know, these students, and again, I think you're going to have students that have a number of different objectives and end goals. You know, they're largely 18-year-olds coming out of high school. You know, I think 18-year-olds have a number of things on their mind in terms of where they're going and such, but we do know that 90% of our graduates from Warwick stay with us and stay here in our -- in, in our service area, and so, you know, I, I think we, we tend to look at if we can get them graduated from Warwick, that they're more likely to stay with us.
I, I think that the, the two-year timeframe for a high school graduate, I think that's kinda discriminatory, I think that if you saw an older, more mature student, they would complete the program, so I, I would like to see it open up to people that are in Wycomico County that are older.
I, I think we would like to see that too, I mean, I think, you know, anytime that we can make the program broader and, and give an opportunity for others to take advantage of a college education, certainly we have eighteen-year-olds that come to us from high school, they are ready, they're ready to continue their education, even if they may have struggled in high school and they do very well, but we certainly, you know, as I said, our average age is twenty-five, we have students who come to us after being out in the workforce for a while or being unemployed, or coming back at a later time and they do very well also.
And they're probably the ones that could benefit from this program, now, if you've got the state to buy into it, I don't think that you would see any objection to change in the criteria.
Hi, I'm done.
Ernie, Joe question?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
This program is modeled after another program in the state?
This is modeled after programs in Allegheny and Garrett, is that correct?
Do they offer to non-credit?
Yes, the Garrett County program does, I'm unsure about Allegheny, but I know the Garrett program does, they, they offer the credit program for students coming out of high school, and then they offer the non-credit program also for students coming out of high school, you know, i- if you're looking at possibly making the non-credit piece part of that, you know, I would encourage you to, to look at expanding that, that age range for students who, you know, are out of high school, who may want to come back and pursue with us a non-credit education, who are a little bit older because they may know exactly what they want to do and are ready, they just don't have the funds available and they can't get financial aid because it's not a credit program.
I know you probably don't know this, but do you know that the non-credit courses being offered, did it boost the enrollment?
For Garrett County as a whole, it did, I don't know that they have had a, a large increase in terms of the amount of students that are pursuing non-credit, but again, I think that probably has something to do with students coming directly out of high school, I think students coming out of high school are more likely and wanting to pursue, in large part at least, credit education, some of them know that they wanna pursue a non-credit program like CNA, et cetera, but if you were opening that up on the non-credit side to a larger age group, I'm sure they would have experienced a larger enrollment in the non-credit program, but their, their program is solely focused on the student coming out of high school, which is what this program is right now.
Did you have a question, Sean?
No, I understand everything you said, makes sense to me.
That's one, that's good.
You know, when you talk about full-time, without financial barriers, I think that's very important, and I think when you talk about a seventeen percent return from the person that completes its program, that's very important, whether it's one student or whether it's eleven or whether it's thirty-five, and the idea behind this program is to educate the young people, to ensure a prosperous future for our county, and I think there are three things that really hit this nail on the head.
I was thinking that probably the non-credit courses would probably be a better way to spend the money, if, if you had your choice, if you were sitting here at this table and had your choice of the best way to spend that two-hundred-and-twelve thousand dollars, would you choose the, the program we have now or a non-credit cour-, non-credit?
I have to go back to work tomorrow, so I'm not gonna answer that, but certainly I think both programs, I think there's value in both, and, and we experience the same things, when we're, regardless of, of this program, when we're recruiting students in the high school, we're, we're talking to students about credit options, and we're talking to students about non-credit options, and co-, a college degree is not for every student who is in high school, there are students that are, they're ready, they're done, they wanna, you know, come, they may not even wanna come and do six weeks or six months of education, but they're more prone to do that than they are a degree, likewise, you have many students who, at the end of their high school education, are ready to go to the next step and pursue a college degree, and so, I don't think it's an either-or, I think it's both, and as you consider changes or look at the program for the coming years, I would, I would urge you to consider both of them.
Again, the merits of the program, I thought, have always been good, and I've always, I've always advocated for it simply on, on the basis of economic development, the fact that, you know, the, the minimal cost of sending a student to Warwick, the, the return that you get on that investment in the long run, when they get a job, start paying taxes, et cetera, is a benefit, and that's why I'm in, in favor of the program, so it's not the program I'm concerned about, I'm concerned about the efficiency of the program, I'm very concerned about the fact that we have not set a minimum GPA for someone that wants to go into the program, I'm not worried about the lim-, the restrictions that we put on the family income, because we went through that very carefully, and as you said before, the fact that many of the students went through the Pell Grant, I think that's fine, I don't think that's a compromise to have to consider, but in doing like really easy math, and it may be wrong, you're gonna have to tell me, but it looked like in spending almost forty thousand dollars for this period and getting about, I guess it was eleven students that got through the program?
Eleven students that are eligible to continue into the next year, that's right.
Right, so you're, you're averaging about thirty-five hundred dollars per student, and, and is that right?
Yes, but I would say we are with the program regardless of what's being spent, and I know obviously that's the greatest concern to you, the money that's being spent, but we are leveraging students that, in, in some cases may, or in some cases may not, have decided to come to college because of the fact that they had heard that there was free community college, and you're not spending a dime on those students, those students are leveraging other resources into our county, federal dollars and state dollars, so I think it's a little bit of both, but yes, in terms of just, if you just look at it as a direct cost of the students that have completed.
Right, well, to me, no matter, you know, understanding what the true benefits are of the program, I have, I have a concern with it, because you're also responsible with taxpayers' dollars, and every penny of this is taxpayers' dollars, it's not ours, so I have a concern when it's costing about two and a half times what it would normally cost to send one student to Warwick Community College, that we're executing this in the most efficient manner, of course, it's probably up to this body here to decide how to make this more efficient if we continue with it, and of course, with your help, of course, these numbers were very beneficial to us and we appreciate that, but I think we, definitely there needs to be something worked on here to continue.
We're certainly willing to work with you on refining the program, and, you know, this is one, one set of data from a year, we don't have a comparative set to look at from the next year, we know how many students we have come, that have initially come into the fall cohort, we have seventy students that are registered for twelve credits for the twenty-seventeen year, so this new class, and I think there are certainly always refinements that can be made to these programs, we will certainly come back and report in the spring on what's happened with the sixteen cohort as well as the seventeen cohort and give you additional data at that time.
When it, when you stated in your presentation here that any student that wishes to withdraw is required to meet with an advisor, what did you, what did, what did you glean from those discussions?
It's a variety of reasons, again, for some students, it's deciding that they just can't handle the twelve-credit load, go to work twenty more hours a week, have other things that are happening in their lives, family issues, those type of things, again, you have some students that are leaving us because they are transferring on to a four-year institution to continue, so they've done one semester or two semesters with us, and then they're going on to the four-year institution, so it's a variety of reasons.
I, I remember you'd stated that before, the question I had is, if they're in this program for assistance, how can they afford to go to a four-year college after only less than, or a year or less than a year in this program?
Because, and the way financial aid is allocated, it's allocated on the total cost of the, of the college, and so, when you look at a college that has a greater cost than us, there is greater financial aid, federal financial aid and other resources that are available to that student, some private institutions, for example, raise endowments and provide, they discount their tuition so that the student doesn't end up paying much based on those resources that are being, so every college is not the same in terms of their total cost, so what one student gets in financial aid at Warwick might be different in terms of what they get at SU or, or any other college, and that's gonna depend on the total cost of the college and the total cost of the available resources they have at that college.
Maybe if you could help us with, because I, I know that the initial, I guess, prerequisite on this program was that it would be tracked and that all the students would be tracked so we would be able to have a solution or an answer to help us with the, the next year and let, you know, to help the program grow, so it would be nice to know, you know, from those exit interviews, specifically how that all broke down into what categories.
Okay.
Great.
Yeah, when, when you kept talking, it sounded like it would be better for the student to go to a four-year college.
Well, not necessarily.
I just, I think you kept saying that, but then, anyway.
We, we love our four-year partners, they do wonderful work, but, you know, they, they are, in most cases, worse.
Well, Council President Cannon was talking about the data, and that's what concerned me when I was looking at Garrett County's, I mean, it was right online, they didn't have enough data to see if the program was efficient or not, because they didn't keep the data, and they had various reasons why, and I think we're seeing the same thing here, but I do have one question, I'll be done, am I reading this right, there are eleven students that got into the program with a GPO less than two point, GPA less than two-point-oh?
There are...
You mean coming out of high school?
Yeah. Why is cohort high school GPA's?
Correct, there are eleven students out of the eighty-four that had less than a two-point-oh coming in.
Do you think that is a bearing factor?
Certainly, a student that has not succeeded to, let's just compare them to a three-point-oh student, obviously they're gonna have a better academic chance coming out of high school, but remembering that community colleges are about access, are about opportunities for students that experience a number of issues in high school, there's a lot of students, there are students that are academically talented, but their GPA in high school doesn't reflect that, they're involved in whatever they're involved in, you know, in, in high school, there, there's a certain point where some students, particularly in the junior and senior years, decide that they're not gonna invest as much in their academic pursuits in high school, so I, I think, you know, by, I, I don't think we can say to those eleven students, you have no chance of success coming to community college, that's what community colleges are there for, to give folks that chance to improve themselves and to give them a fresh start academically, which they, they may not have been the best student in high school, they're not gonna get into a four-year, obviously, with that grade point average, but they can come to Warwick, they can succeed and end up being in a better economic position after leaving us.
And, and I get that, and that's why I think that it should be opened up to older students who know what they wanna do.
I'm done. Any other questions? All right, we appreciate you coming in, is there anything else you'd like to add?
Uh, no, I think we're all right.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is a presentation on the Bay Area Center for Independent Living Incorporated by Dr. Catherine L.R. Jones, Executive Director.
You have a presentation, I don't have to take the place of the mic, I'll just talk.
Do you mean hook up the cable?
I mean, it shouldn't be, it's, it should be set to hook up, is that correct?
Yeah, we can hook up.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sure.
I screwed it in, hold on.
He has it in his office.
Do you wanna, um, do you wanna begin the presentation while they're hooking this up?
Yeah, absolutely.
Or do you have to work one or the other?
First of all, I just wanna thank the council for letting me speak tonight, it's a great honor to be here, I am from Wycomico County, I grew up in the city of Salisbury, started my education at Penner's Elementary School, graduated from James and Bennett High School, graduated twice from Salisbury University, and I give back to my community today as the Executive Director for Bay Area Center for Independent Living, and also as an adjunct instructor for Salisbury University's History Department.
Can you speak into the microphone for us?
Yes, I'm sorry.
It can be, it's flexible there.
Okay. Okay, can you hear me? Okay, just let me know, can I begin the presentation?
Not yet.
Okay, all righty, I'm here for two reasons, first off is, is to talk about Bay Area Center for Independent Living, I am the new Executive Director, I've been the Executive Director for about fifteen months now, we've made a lot of great changes in the past year and we wanna continue to serve our community in many different areas, Bay Area Center is one of seven centers for independent living in Maryland, we're the largest center, we cover nine counties of Maryland, so we cover the entire eastern shore, we do also move into Hartford County for telecommunication devices, Wycomico County has the highest number of consumers that we serve, our mission and our purpose at Bay Area Center for Independent Living is providing advocacy and resources and support for those with disabilities, we do that through a variety of programs that we have, we have approximately fourteen programs, our goal is to help individuals with disabilities live independently in the community, so that means we're gonna provide vocational supports and vocational programs through the Department of Rehabilitation Services, we also provide what's called pre-employment transition services, and those for our youth that are in our public school systems between the ages of fourteen and twenty-one that are preparing for that transition into adulthood, be it through college readiness skills or through vocational skills, we provide benefits counseling, which means we all know that anyone who chooses or lives a life on social security disability insurance is going to live a life in poverty, so we do, do benefits counseling to encourage individuals with disability, with disabilities to be able to work within the community as well, we also have what's called a supports planning agency, we are a Medicaid provider, we, through the Maryland Department of Health, we provide support services to individuals in their homes that are coming out of nursing facilities with community options waiver and/or individuals that might go into a nursing facility through community first-choice programs, all of the individuals that we serve, we have approximately three hundred that we're serving right now, are individuals who live in poverty, which means that they make less than two thousand dollars a year, we also provide independent living skills, so we approximately serve, and my numbers, I think, part of the presentation was given to you, we serve approximately around two thousand individuals every year in providing resources and advocacy and actually going to their homes and making a difference and doing environmental assess-, assessments, we also work in partnership, you might have heard of Chesapeake Housing Mission, together, we have built over one hundred and six permanent ramps for residents in Wycomico, Worcester and Somerset Counties, and we're very proud of that, as a matter of fact, we set, we shut our center down for one day, and with, out of our approximately twenty-five employees, most of us are women, and we put on our tool belts and we went out there to help someone in Wycomico County to build a twenty-six-foot ramp, and we did so successfully, so we're very proud of that as well, we have increased our marketing efforts and we have also increased our outreach efforts in the community, within the past year, we've had one hundred and thirty-two outreach efforts, we're trying to get our message across and we're also trying to help those in our community as well by doing so, one of the things that, so that's a little bit about our history and who we are, but we have a great vision of what we would like to do for the community, it was just this past, I do believe, the end of April, beginning of May, Secretary Schrader from Maryland Department of Health visited Wycomico County... Secretary Schrader from Maryland Department of Health visited Wycomica County and came to the Wycomica Civic Center to talk about the Holly Center Reimagine Project. With the Holly Center Reimagine Project, they were looking for organizations or agencies who would like to occupy space at the Holly Center, but stay also true to the mission of the Holly Center. And that's providing individuals with disabilities some resources or programs or opportunities. So with that said, it just seemed logical. Bay Area Center for Independent Living is located directly across from the Holly Center campus. We are in partnership with MAC Incorporated, our area agency on aging, and it just made sense that we would look to expanding our services into the recreational field as well. So being able to go over and visit the Holly Center Pool, which is located in their Activities and Administration Building, and knowing and having been a participant and having a child with a special need, using that pool three and a half years ago, I was amazed to see what good condition that pool was in. I'm very happy to say Maryland Department of Health is going to be spending quite a bit of money to refurbish the pool. And we are in the process of lease negotiations to open the pool. And we're probably, right now, we're in negotiations, and we're hoping by this time next year that the pool will be open to all individuals in Wycomica County with disabilities and also for the residents of the Holly Center that have been without the pool for three and a half years.
No apologies.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah, I know, the pool was a real big thing.
Thank you.
For so many people, the pool was very important to a lot, a lot of them, and I'm glad to see that they're, we're getting that back.
Okay, let's see if it's going to do that. Okay, it's, fear's going to fly. But one of the reasons that I'm here to speak in front of the council is that according to our census, approximately 8,000 residents of Wycomica County under the age of 65 have a documented disability. And this does not include those over the age of 65, and as we naturally age, we acquire some disabilities as we move on in age. And so looking at the percentage of residents that would benefit from the reopening of the Holly Center Pool would be great, and particularly if we market it well and provide this opportunity to our citizens. In addition to the pool itself, we are also asking for some classroom space in the administrative building, which is adjacent to the classrooms, because we would like to start what's called a Youth Transition Center. A Youth Transition Center offers the youth in our county an opportunity to be able to prepare for college and/or vocational trade. And that's the Pre-Employment Transition Services that I was referring to. We are licensed through Department of Rehabilitation Services to provide these pre-acts programs and also vocational programs as well. Our vocational program is really soaring. The past month, the referrals that have been coming in because of the excitement through Department of Rehabilitation Services, that we're going to create this youth transition and vocational center. They want to support us, and they want to make sure that financially we're able to absorb the costs of not just the classroom space, but also the pool. We are currently working with and talking to other agencies that work with those with disabilities to see if we can form partnerships in using the pool. The overall cost would be approximately around $116,000 a year. MAC Incorporated does have an interest in a partnership. Deaf Independent Living Association may have an interest as well. We've been talking to Easter Seals of Maryland and Delaware. We've been communicating with United Needs and Abilities and just various organizations to see if they have an interest in it.
Is the pool heated now?
Well, right, there's nothing in the pool.
Right.
Right now, we're having someone look at the pool and giving a second opinion. We do know it's probably going to need a new pool liner, so that will be added to the list of things that need to be repaired prior to us taking on the pool. But yes, the pool, if you can imagine, 95 degrees, and it's very much a therapeutic environment. It does have a ramp that an aquatic wheelchair can be used for. And I personally, as a parent, I've watched many children with disabilities, especially those with autism, that first go to the pool and they might sit on that ramp and just barely have their toes in the water. And then, you know, the next week, they're a little bit further in, and before you know it, they're actually swimming. And we've witnessed that. And in addition to what it does for the participants, those with disabilities, what it does for the families is just incredible, and I've seen this in action. We also want to provide a recreational environment, a therapeutic, recreational, educational, vocational environment that parents can be a part of as well. So they can come without any cost and use the pool and be able to be with their families and be able to have support from other family members as well as then navigate the processes of supporting a person with a disability. This is a slide, I think I sort of went through it, but those are some of the numbers of some of the individuals that we have already served in this past fiscal year, which actually ended October 1st. And there's a picture, that's, we really did build a ramp. That's us in the corner there. And the lady who received the ramp and her granddaughter took that picture. I'll talk briefly about our Vocations Center. Right now, it's not a joke. We are very overcrowded. Every time we do try to do some kind of youth transition program, you can see we're busting at the seams. The classroom space is much needed, and here's some pictures of the pool. And I must commend Holly Center maintenance staff, because for the pool to be drained three and a half years ago, you wouldn't have known it. It is spotless, and it was very well maintained. You can see the ramp that comes off the side. There is also a lift chair for anybody who would like to enter the pool in that fashion. And there's also pictures of the classroom space. There are lots of empty rooms in the administrative building in addition to a wonderful gymnasium that could be used and utilized as well.
So now you're using, because I know your office is behind the MAC Center, but you're also using like the gym there. Those are MAC Center facilities, right?
At MAC Incorporated, yes. Individuals with disabilities can use their fitness center. So, again, we have amazing partnership with Patty Tingle, the Executive Director, and MAC Incorporated. This was just a little information on pre-employment transition services. Again, we're looking for the youth in between the ages of 14 and 21 that would benefit from our services for college readiness and/or employment services. We also will be applying to provide services for Developmental Disability Administration starting January 1st. It is required that individuals with disabilities be able to have a menu of choices or services that they would like to have in the community, so we would like to be a part of that menu. And you can see this is new for the Family Supports waiver, that they're going to be asking for family empowerment supports and family-to-family support. And what a better way to provide family-to-family support than through recreational activities. And there's the pool again. I couldn't get over that picture. In addition to that, we're the first center for independent living in the nation to be under training to be, to provide free Health Matters programs. So what we would like to do and what we are currently doing, we just started, matter of fact, yesterday, our first 12-week course. We would like to provide health and nutrition and exercise classes for individuals with disabilities. Right now, we're working with a population with intellectual and developmental disabilities, and we hope to bring this to the Holly Center and be able to continue this and be able to use the pool as well to encourage physical activity. So with that said, as we get closer to signing the lease for the pool, I would like to send a letter, if I may, asking for support from Wycomica County Council as we move forth in providing these services to the county, so we can lessen the burden on our families for the cost of having to use the pool. That's all. Thank you.
Well, sorry this wasn't helping Tom for you, but you did great.
Thank you.
Any questions from anyone?
This program is not specific to Wycomica County, is it? I thought it was for the entire eastern shore. I think you had a map up there, too.
Bay Area Center, our organization serves all nine counties, but for the Youth Transition Center and the Vocational Center, right now, we're looking at Wycomica County. Most of our referrals are from Department of Rehabilitation Services from Wycomica.
From Wycomica.
I see in the history here, you're formally known as Holly Community.
Yes.
And I guess that's what I knew you all. When did the name change?
Okay, great question. We started with the Holly Center. We were almost an auxiliary for them. We became Holly Community Incorporated, Holly Foundation, then Holly Community Incorporated. And then we became a Center for Independent Living about three and a half years ago, so we could provide more services for the entire eastern shore.
I think your name's better recognized in our area as Holly Community. People will know it. Have you had any?
That's why she's here tonight.
I know.
Have you had any outreach to any of the local civic organizations, like your VFWs and any places like that?
Yes.
News homes for any funding?
Yes, and matter of fact, one of our biggest sponsors is a local VFW on Route 50 across from the post office, Muse Posts, and I think it's 189. I apologize if I'm wrong on that. But yes, they have contributed quite a bit to our efforts in providing activities and for our outreach efforts in Wycomica County. And we are looking for a potential partnership with the VA. And matter of fact, October 9th, I've been invited to speak about our vision, and hopefully we can gain support from other VFWs as well.
Yeah, I was talking to a gentleman. I know that you offer more than just the services there. You have one area where you actually have utensils and things for the elderly or for the handicap?
Yes.
To make it easier for them to make phone calls. I mean, we're talking about utensils they can take home with them, correct?
Yes, we have, and I brought some things, but just for time's sake, I won't bring them out. But we do have an assistive technology lab. We actually call it an Assistive and Vocational Technology Lab. It is free to anybody with a disability. Anyone in Wycomica County can come in Monday through Friday from 8:00 to 4:30. They can use our lab. We have eight state-of-the-art computers with large screen monitors. They're touchscreen, so everything can be expanded out. They're equipped with all of the adaptive software anyone would need with a disability. That includes CurseWell, that includes Dragon, so you can command your computer to do what it needs to do. And it also includes screen readers. One of our full-time employees is blind, and she comes out and she'll do a demonstration of how to navigate the computer with, without sight. So we do use this lab to help individuals with disabilities bridge that gap and hopefully find gainful employment. So we have everything from the high tech, and we also have the low tech, which would be the assistive devices that you're mentioning, from every kind of gadget. Someone will come into our office or will go to their home, will assess their needs. And sometimes we have to be creative and design, actually, pieces of durable medical equipment that they can use in order to be able to remain in their homes. We do permanent ramps for individuals, and we pay the majority of the ramps. We ask that our consumers donate between 10% to 20% of the total cost for the materials, so they have some kind of investment into the ramp. We also, and we've done 106 permanent ramps thus far and paid for them. And we're supported by Chop Tank Electric. They have given us a lot of money to make that continue on. We also do hearing aids. Several people, because Medicare will not pay for hearing aids, so we do help many individuals with hearing aids, or provide them with what's called a pocket talker. Pocket talker's only about $100, and they can just clip it to their waist, and they can be able to hear clearly what people are saying, and sometimes too clear what they're saying, all the way down a hallway. If they need it, we'll come up with it. And the beauty of this is that we will loan out any of our assistive technology devices to our community with no cost. And if it's something that does benefit them, and they financially cannot afford that assistive technology piece and/or adaptive software, then we will help find the funding for them, so they can have it. And we've successfully done that. I'd like to say, between financially what we've provided, we have about $67,000 a year that we put out for independent living assistive technology devices. We work with Maryland Technology Assistance Program. They provide us money to pay for devices as well. And then, of course, we have these amazing community partners to assist us with that. United Way being one, Community Foundation of the Eastern Shore being another. And Rural Maryland Council has given us an amazing grant this year, so we can help the youth in between the ages of 14 all the way to the ages of 24 be able to prepare for college and/or gain full employment.
Yes, Mark.
I mean, I know right after I came on the council, Rose Carey invited, I mean, I know she invited everybody, but she gave me a very thorough tour, so you, I mean, she did some great work over there. I'm sure that tours are still available if people want to go and see what you're doing. When you mentioned, the one question I had with your presentation was you mentioned you may be requesting support. What exactly do you mean by support?
Good tough question. Possibly financial support for the pool, to keep, for the sustainability for Wycomica County residents.
Yeah, I've been there too. I took the tour as well. It's funny, because about a week ago, I was talking to a gentleman who was talking about his more recent handicap that he'd overcome. I don't know whether it was arthritis or what it might have been. I said, well, you know, they've got this Center for Independent Living. He goes, I've already been there. He goes, they're doing great. He goes, I've already had my third trip over there, and they're setting me up with everything I need. So that was really interesting to hear him.
Thank you.
You had reached out to him, so that was working.
Yes, and I do believe by providing this therapeutic pool environment, we're going to be able to reach out to more. And it's not just the pool. We can help them in so many other ways. It's just for them to come in, be able to have the benefits of that, and then we can provide wraparound services in so many more ways, so individuals can remain independent in their homes, hopefully not have to transition to nursing or rehabilitated facilities, but also for our youth to find gainful employment, to be able to go to college and be prepared for what to expect.
Thank you again very much, and thank Rose Carey for us, because she does great work, yeah.
She does.
She's a champion.
She is. Thank you.
Thanks again.
The next item on the agenda is Resolution Number 127, 2017, endorsing grant funding from the Maryland Department of Commerce under the Maryland Economic Development Assistance Authority and Fund in the amount of $100,000. Accept said grant funds and to provide an equal match to the revolving loan fund and to certify the project is consistent with the economic development plan of the county. And we have Mr. Dave Ryan here with the Salisbury Wycomica Economic Development.
I entertain a motion to approve Resolution 127, 2017.
To move?
Second.
Second.
Ryan, how are you? Tell us what you're working on.
Good evening. Thank you. Thanks for having me in tonight. We, the Maryland, this technology, Maryland Economic Development Assistance and Authority Fund, affectionately known as MEDAF to those in the field, is really the state's primary financing vehicle through the Maryland Department of Commerce. And most of those loans are direct to companies for job creation or job retention efforts. The fund, however, can also be utilized to assist jurisdictions in opening or setting up a local revolving loan fund or further capitalizing a local revolving loan fund. So we've utilized that a couple of times this year with a few projects here from the MEDAF program and as well as our local program. And we've utilized those funds since the establishment in 2002 to provide the 10% statutory match to the MEDAF program required by Maryland, so the county doesn't really have to. Each year, I very respectfully and politely ask the department for further capitalization. And each year, they very respectfully and politely say no. This year, they said yes. So they've accepted our request for $100,000 injection into the existing program. And the required one-to-one match would be through the existing funds and the fund itself. I require no capital injection from Wycomica County. So we appreciated the executive's support, and we're asking for concurrence with the county council as well.
Any questions?
Should you have asked for more?
I did. They respectfully and politely said no.
David, how much do we have in the fund now?
We have, if all were paid in, about $630,000. To answer your question, Councilman Halloway, the cap is 250. We asked for 250. And we're pleased to get the 100. Mr. Holloway, the, the, Mr. Joe Holloway knows from our, from our board.
And, and you should be glad of what you've received, because I, I know for a fact that the funds are very hard to, to, to get. And there are some programs that have actually not worked, so, you know, what you're doing is very, is very good. Um, there are other programs that have not worked here.
Yeah. I just don't think the need for financing our local business community is going to be less in the future than it will be today.
Any other questions? Seeing none. All those in favor of Resolution One Twenty-Seven, Two Thousand and Seventeen, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion's carried. Resolution passes.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, very much.
The next item is Resolution Number One Twenty-Eight, Two Thousand and Seventeen, authorizing the county executive to accept a grant award from the Community Foundation of the Eastern Shore in the amount of three thousand five hundred and fifty-seven dollars. The Community Foundation offers a community needs grant twice a year to a wide range of nonprofit organizations or eligible programs within government agencies. Wycomico County Sheriff's Office applied for the grant and has received grant funding that will be used for the purchase of a unmanned aerial vehicle for emergency situations, and we have Lieutenant Weersburg here to answer any questions.
Entertain a motion to approve Resolution One Twenty-Eight, Two Thousand and Seventeen.
Does that move?
Second. Discussion.
Good evening, Lieutenant.
Good evening.
If you could both just state your name for the record, please. We appreciate it.
I'm scared I'm going to fall over.
Lieutenant Rich Weersburg, Wycomico County Sheriff's Office.
Corporal Jordan Banks, Wycomico County Sheriff's Office.
Thanks for being here.
I've asked Corporal Banks to, uh, attend. He's more in-depth with the practical nature of the drone, so if you have any specific questions of the use, I'm just the grant writer.
Any questions? John?
Do you have another drone?
We do not.
So this will be your first one?
Yes, sir.
How many do you need?
Well, this is a pilot program, but I think one right now would be sufficient for what we are, believe it to be used for and how we plan to use it.
And will you explain, please, Lieutenant, what it will be used for?
Our primary purposes, of course, are for community needs. Uh, one of our biggest calls for services either lost children or vulnerable adult. And to have an eye in the sky view, I think is very beneficial. We all know we have two helicopters on the shore we could use, Delaware State Police, Maryland State Police. But the amount of time, sometimes if they're busy on a medical run or other emergency needs, we can have this up within minutes. We currently have four pilots, I call them pilots, but drone pilots trained. Three of the four recently attended the class at Warwick Community College, a two-week course. One is a National Guard arm in the Army helicopter pilot.
Are there any limits on what drones can be used for, or, I mean, do you have any internal policies to be developed on this, or is it just kind of whatever situations may arise?
We have a, we do have a policy already written. Um, right now, our policy states that we will use it for training purposes, crash reconstruction, evidence collection if we have a large scene. Bike Week would have been a fantastic opportunity for us to use it. We, at one point, we had a backup leaving the Shorebirds parking lot. We weren't sure where we were having to hold up. If we could have deployed it, we could have seen, maybe we could have done some advantages with correction how we were doing traffic. Would have alleviated that sooner.
Matt?
Um, so it's, it's, it's thirty-five hundred now. This isn't like, I guess, maybe the drone that most of us see. Is it, is it, uh, a different type of unit, or?
Uh, the size, I, the drone is, I don't have exactly how size it is, but it has four propellers. It's coming with extra batteries. We also have, are purchasing an iPad Mini to go along with the controller.
Right.
Um, I, do you know the actual size?
It's, it's, it's approximately-
I got you. That's okay. I was just curious.
Very similar to what you see, like WBOS units.
Yeah. Now, um, now I know businesses have to, if, if they have a drone and they use it in the business, they have to actually have someone who is a pilot that's licensed to operate it. Do you have that same restriction?
We have the three-week course that we attended, and then they had to go take a test. They are licensed pilot through the FAA.
Right.
We are currently filling out the paperwork with FAA, but we haven't sent it in until getting final approval from the council to submit that paperwork. And has also worked with the county attorney, the state's attorney, to make sure, uh, that it's appropriate.
So I think this is invaluable, and I'd like, you know, thank you all for, and the Community Foundation for the, going to the effort to get this grant, because I, I think it'll be a big plus for the department.
I think it'd be, um, a lot cheaper than using a helicopter as well.
That's, that's one of the, absolutely.
I always have this fear of these drones falling out of the sky and hitting somebody.
From, we have several deputies that, that have it for their personal use, and they don't seem to have that issue. And we will, the four pilots will be, go out and practice with and have practical exercises. I know the search team is looking to use it for, for when they train to overlook, to see when they, other practices are, are actually working, see from a different point of view.
Anybody else?
I would like to say, though, as you brought the Community Foundation, this is the first time we've worked with the Community Foundation on a grant, and they were extremely helpful, and don't think we could have got through the process without them, so.
Good. Great. And the questions? All those in favor of Resolution One Twenty-Seven, Two Thousand and Seventeen, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion's carried. Resolution passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
Let us know when you get it. Still waiting to ride that motorcycle.
Mr. President, that's all I have.
Mr. Rosa, good evening.
Good evening, Mr. President, council members. Uh, I call your attention to Resolution One Twenty-Nine, Two Thousand and Seventeen.
Entertain a motion to approve Resolution One Twenty-Nine, Two Thousand and Seventeen.
Does that move?
Second.
Second.
Thank you.
Uh, this is an audit report on the county fuel system. Uh, it is not part of our annual audit plan. As explained previously, the fuel audit is a continuous audit. Uh, we take a look at that periodically, uh, over the course of the year. Uh, the scope and objectives this time were to look at controls and billing. The conclusion was mostly satisfactory. Uh, seven out of eight tests that we performed returned satisfactory results. We are still, however, having an ongoing problem with the AIM units. Uh, they still seem to be a problem. However, we are seeing some improvement in compliance. Uh, new management initiatives to solve some of the technical problems are in evidence, and in the auditor's opinion, we'll, we, I think we will continue to see improvement in the compliance with the, uh, the AIM units, which, as you recall, uh, are known as fuel rings. It's part of the computer system in the car to pick up the information, uh, from the car when, or vehicle when it is, uh, being fueled. Our next inquiry is scheduled for midwinter, and I'll be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions from council?
So at this point, they're looking at sticking with the AIM units?
I'm suggesting yes. Uh, for example, we've learned, uh, some technical issues that, that we had could be solved, uh, through various means that we've, we've tried and have worked. Uh, there was one, uh, unit that the, uh, the computer for the AIM unit was located underneath the vehicle where it was, uh, getting jarred around and getting mud in it. So we took the seat out. They took the seat out and put it under the seat inside the cab, seemed to solve the problem. We have an ongoing issue with the sheriff's vehicles because they have a tremendous amount of electronics in them. And, uh, they're also, uh, working to try to solve some of those problems as well.
Any other questions? Seeing none. All those in favor of Resolution One Twenty-Nine, Two Thousand and Seventeen, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion's carried. Resolution passes.
That's all I have. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Rosa. At this time, we open the floor for public comments. Uh, I'd like to remind you that if you have any, um, concerns, come to the podium, please. State your name and your address. Um, we do have a three-minute time limit, and I would like to, to see if you can refrain from repeating what maybe others may have said just to, out of respect for everyone that is here tonight, so that we could get home at a respectable time. Again, uh, come to the podium, please. State your name and address and your concern. You left somebody.
I have a helper. Uh, thank you for hearing us out, um, tonight. My name is Melinda Glover. I live at two-six-eight-two-one Pratt Road here in Salisbury. I have some neighbor friends with me who also are from Pratt Road. Um, we are still concerned about flooding issues. You may have remembered that my husband spoke at your last meeting in September. I just wanted to refresh your memory. Um, I did learn today that, um, a study was done, and we were told that all ditches and swales were in correct working order. Um, but three floods in the last year tell me that's probably not the case. Or that they may all be working well individually, but when three developments drain to one small ditch, which is in front of two or three houses, it's too much. It's an overload. So we are looking forward tonight to being a part of seeing if we can't find a solution to this. I didn't know if any neighborhood members wanted to speak, or, no, it's just my mouth tonight, so, yeah. Um, uh, and basically, that's it. We would like to just minimize the hundreds of thousands of dollars or the damage that we've, you know, experienced over this past year, so.
Thank you, Ms. Glover.
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Dr. Michelle Schleifer. Um, I'm at one fifteen Francis Drive in Salisbury, Maryland, and I'm an associate professor and the current chair of the Psychology Department at Salisbury University. And, uh, I'm a social psychologist and applied social psychologist, and I'm actually here tonight to, um, just weigh in a little bit on the controversy regarding the winder marker on the county courthouse lawn. Um, I feel that my professional training as a psychological scientist actually has a lot to bear in this particular discussion, um, particularly because research on prejudice and stereotyping and the impact of biases is really rooted in my discipline stemming from its disciplines foundation in the nineteen thirties. Um, and I just want to briefly mention a couple, uh, key components of psychological research that might weigh in on your decision regarding this controversy. Um, there's actually ample research on prejudice and implicit biases, which suggests that placement of the winder marker in our community actually comes at a significant social cost to the people who live here. Um, for instance, there's been repeated lab experiments that have consistently demonstrated that exposure to racist symbolism, including specifically reminders of the Confederacy, uh, Confederacy symbolism, increases prejudices from white community members towards members of the African-American community. And in fact, these prejudices, uh, increase in prejudices are even found among people who score low on indicators of prejudice. So these are not things that just affect some people. They're indeed things that are massively widespread triggering in the general public of racism and discrimination. And not only is this linked to attitudes, but it also translates into differential decisions regarding behavior. For instance, there was a lab experiment which was done, which exposed people who are both black and white to Confederacy symbology, and then they were asked to indicate, this was done in two thousand and eight, so they were asked to indicate their, their likelihood to vote for different political candidates. And lo and behold, even people who scored low on prejudice were significantly likely, uh, less likely, rather, to, uh, say they would vote for President Barack Obama in comparison to other candidates, whereas that same founding was not fa, was not found among people who were not exposed to the Confederate symbols. So there is an impact of these type of, of symbols in our community. Um, not only that, there's also psychological research which finds that this actually disperses to other marginalized groups. So priming negative stereotypes about one social group actually can also significantly impact prejudices and perceptions towards other marginalized groups as well. So it is in my, my belief as a psychological scientist and as somebody who's well-versed in this literature, that if we're really concerned about the image of our community and we want to make sure that this is a community in which all members can thrive, can thrive, in which we can reduce discriminatory behavior, that it is in our best interest of, as a community, to remove the winder marker. And again, my perspective is rooted in my knowledge of over forty years of research on psychological science, uh, stemming around prejudices and implicit biases. And, um, I do think that, you know, I'm, I'm a big fan of research-backed decision-making, and I do think that it's imperative for the vitality of our community that we take this research into consideration when you're making decisions regarding whether or not a Confederate marker belongs on the courthouse lawn. Thank you.
Thank you, Doctor.
My name is James Yamakawa, uh, six-zero-four, Forest Drive, Fruitland, Maryland. Um, I apologize for the, uh, informality of my attire. I just came from my son's soccer game. I pretty much just have a few comments, um, again, dealing with the window sign. Uh, I received a email and con, and conversation with my, uh, councilman, Mark Kilmer, um, that this, uh, council has not yet received the petition from Jonathan Taylor of the Lower Eastern Shore News to keep the marker where it is. I do know the council has expressed that it was, in, indicated that there were many, many more signatures on that, that, um, petition, and that our signature is numbered in the dozen. Um, of course, that was only the, uh, in-person signatures. The online signatures numbered well over three hundred. Uh, according to my email contact with Mrs. Hurley and with Councilman Kilmer, uh, this council has not received the petition to keep the, the marker, and I feel that the council should not make a decision, like, you know, to keep the marker without actually receiving the petition to keep the marker. That being said, only the petition to remove the marker has been submitted, and only the people who have petitioned to remove the marker have had the courage to come here and submit that petition in person. So, all I have to say is, who's actually coming out here and speaking? This is a stain on our community. I know people say it's heritage, and people say it's history, but as a good friend, the doctor, uh, says before, there are actual consequences to this. And that's all I have to say about that. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Y'all know who I am, Diana Anus, Brick Kilmer, Salisbury. When did that sign become so offensive before this year? Ernie, has bothered you before this year?
We, uh, refrain from direct questions to council members.
Well, uh, I just don't get it. That sign's been there long before most all of us. All of a sudden, it becomes offensive. Everything's black and white. Well, I hold the trump card, honey. I'm, I'm a card-carrying Indian. And that offends me that you all want to cry about every little thing. This community needs a lot more done in it than a sign removed. You wanna, you wanna find something to, to work on? How about our homeless situation? What about our drug addiction in this county? You're gonna cry about a sign that nobody knew was there? As a veteran, it offends me that you would even attack another veteran. What have you done for this country besides cry? Leave that sign right where it is.
Thank you, Ms. Anus.
My name's Dave Galsley, Senior. I'm also a veteran. I live on Morris Road, Pittsfield, Maryland. I was born and raised in Sharp Town, and I also have Indian ethnicity too. I was a policeman here for a number of years. That sign's been there as long as I can remember. But this lady says, "We've got a lot more serious problems in this area than a sign." It's part of a heritage. It's part of the growth of a nation. Yes, we made, made mistakes. Everybody makes mistakes. If you don't make a mistake, you're not doing nothing. So let's learn by mistakes, but yet, this person was a veteran. And I'm gonna stand up for a veteran. I'm a disabled veteran myself. I think that it should be left alone. It's part of our heritage and part of our history. The kids nowadays coming up, I've talked to a lot of them, and some don't even know the basic history we learn in the ninth grade in school. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Galsley. Any other public comments?
Good evening, council. My name is Julie Bruington. I live in Wycomico County. Thank you, Count, Council President, for allowing us to speak again this evening. I was here a couple of weeks ago, and we discussed this, um, topic in the midst of a discussion about the fire department and services there, and this whole room was taken over by the likes of what I would call Black Lives Matter and Antifa. Um, I thought we resolved that issue at that last meeting, um, because this council does not have the authority over county property and what is on it. Um, but yet, they come back to disrupt council meetings to discuss it again. Um, I also thought it was over when President Cannon said that this council, at least my interpretation of his remarks, were, are not interested in taking up the issue. The issue is a divisive one. It's intended to be a divisive one. It's intended to put people on opposite sides of an issue over a sign. Over a sign. Let me, let me clear that up. We had a shooting in Las Vegas a couple of days ago. The whole country is aware. The whole country is aware, well aware about. We have some really big issues in this country, and I submit to you, a sign is not on the top 10 of them. So, it's not really about this sign. Let me be very clear what this is about, and I want you to hear me very carefully. This is not about a sign. This is a political movement. It is about removing everything in this country that is uniquely American, whether it's a Robert E. Lee statue, anything to do with the Confederacy, the national flag, our beautiful flag that's being attacked now, or changing names of streets and parks and schools. It's going on all across our country, and that is not going to be enough. That sign's not going to be enough. Changing the names of streets and signs and schools and towns is not going to be enough because the end game is something else. The end game is to change this country and to charge with everybody who disagrees with something that is about the Confederacy, that they're white supremacists. If they don't agree, they will either submit, or they will be charged with being a white supremacist. So, we will cower back. Well, I will not cower because this is our country, and they're coming for our Constitution, and they're coming for our freedom of speech, and we have seen that demonstrated throughout the country with this Antifa group of people, these thugs, beating people over the heads because they want the right to speak, and they're proud of their country, and they want to sing "God Bless America." And I am tired of being told I'm a racist because I love my country. That is not true, and neither are any of the people that have signed that petition, which is now nearly 800 people. And James, it has been submitted. It is on the Internet for everyone to see. I just checked it before I got here today. It was just a couple dozen away from 200 people on that petition, who do not want to come out and speak and be called a racist. Excuse me for a moment. Anyway, it just doesn't seem to be enough because we're talking about inequities, and, you know, there are laws in this country that protect classes and people and discrimination, and it is the freest country in the world, and yet, we're told we are unfair, we are, you know, our history is wrong, we can't get it right, and the only way to fix it is to erase it. And I dismiss that. Some of you may know, I serve on the Republican Central Committee here in the county as an elected member, and I've had dozens and dozens of constituents of mine address me about this when there are so many other pressing issues, that they don't understand what's happening in this county and in this town, and why this is even being discussed anymore. And it keeps coming back at this council.
If you could wrap.
I'm sorry. Yes. So, anyway, I just would like to say that we are not groups of white and black people. We are not groups of women and men, privileged versus underprivileged. We are all Americans, and we need to start acting like it, and we need to start acting like it in our hometown. Thank you very much.
Hello. Thank you, Council, for having us, the opportunity to speak this evening. My name is Michelle Bradley, and I live on 211 Church Street in Hebron, Maryland, and I'm not exactly sure how to follow that up. I probably should have gone before you, Julie, because that was very well said, and there's not much more I can say about that. I agree completely with the previous speakers, Ms. Ennis and Mr. Gosley. If it's a matter of having a paper petition submitted, can I print it out and bring it? I will certainly, I will do that. I will pay for the paper costs and the ink to print that out and submit it if that's what needs to be done. Some of the points, I just wanted to reiterate what Julie said about removing history. That seems to be what we're doing, and I have, we shouldn't keep doing that. I mean, we're getting bullied into it, and I would be very interested to see the researched-based information that maybe the doctor would have with our exposure to bullying and being called names, because Julie was absolutely right, and especially when you look more to the right, we tend to, we don't want to be called these names, we don't want to be labeled that, so we give in, we give in, we give in. Well, let's stop giving in. This is enough. It is a sign. It is a sign. If you would, I mean, I knew about the lynching there from my parents well before I knew about the Winder sign. The only reason why I knew about the Winder sign is when they started doing all the new renovations to the courthouse, and then it became an issue. I'm not sure if it was James or his group that brought it up first, but that's when I knew about the sign. Now, I didn't know it was there, but I knew about the lynching. If you want to have a lynching sign there, too, by all means, because we shouldn't erase that history either. All of that is a part of what makes us Americans. We went through that history. We grew. To erase it is unconceivable to me. Unconceivable. And I would like to maybe talk to the doctor and see if there's any research that they have done on that as well, and that bullying tactics, and by calling people names and giving them a label and see how much they cower. And I would ask that if it is up to this committee or this council to leave the sign where it is. If you want to add an additional sign, I'm all for that as well, but we cannot keep erasing our history. It is what it is. We are all Americans. We all went through it. What's next? You know, the flag. Betsy Ross probably didn't even sew that flag. It was probably one of her servants that did that flag. Are we going to get rid of the flag? I mean, they're already trying to do that with the National Anthem. I mean, yes, there was a third stanza, we all know, but that's where we came from. Why get rid of it? We need to embrace it, learn from it, and move on. It's what makes us America, and I think the sign should stay where it is. Thank you for your time. I won't take much more.
Thanks, Ms. Bradley. Any other comments?
Hello. My name is Shar Selby. I'm not a speaker like these ladies, but I'll do my best. I'd like to thank our council members for this opportunity to discuss a very important issue in our city right now, and it's this online petition started by Mr. James Yamakawa of Serge Delmarva, a subgroup of Black Lives Matter here in Salisbury. I'll have to admit, when I first read this petition, it made me angry. I was quite shocked at how it was worded. This request for removal was based on blatant accusations of white supremacy. His petition, it reads, and I quote, "Face it, this marker is just another example of the place of honor given to those who have fought for the cause of white supremacy," end quote. I, as a woman with Southern heritage, my family, I hail from North Carolina, and Confederate ancestry, found his remarks to be insulting and a slap to every Confederate soldier who fought in the Civil War. As a student of American history, I, too, was taught that the South succeeded because of slavery. However, as a free-thinking woman, I dug deeper into our history and discovered that these false claims are backed by historical proof, that our Southern states were indeed imposed upon by Northern aggression in attempt to manipulate Southerners financially and physically into submission. Our government at the time were heavily taxing Southerners as much as, with a 42% tax rate. Both the North and the South owned slaves, although I disagree with this. The truth is, they both did. Both the Union Army and the Confederate armies enlisted black soldiers who fought in our battles. Slavery was not the sole issue of infighting, or was it the start of the war or because of its ending? Confederate states wanted nothing from the U.S. government but to peacefully coexist as independent, free states. Slave ownership, although looked down upon today, was a way of life 150 years ago. That's a fact that none of us can change. It's part of our history. This was a war fought over state rights with slavery issues. We, as Americans, have a long history of honoring veterans of war, regardless of what we think of the causes of those wars. We must continue to do so now. History should be remembered and to serve as a lesson for future generations, not eradicated or altered. Americans all over America have expressed concern for the fate of our Confederate monuments and historical markers, including those of our first President George Washington and our founding father, Thomas Jefferson, who also were slaveholders. Where will this end? Will they be next to be removed in the cowardness of the middle of the night? George Bush once said, "A great nation does not hide its history. It faces its flaws and corrects them." We corrected our flaws 150 years ago. Serge Delmarva's claims of white supremacy hold no merit today. Segregation ended 60 years ago? By removing this plaque, you are indeed violating my First Amendment rights to freedom of expression and speech as a person with Southern Confederate heritage. You must recognize this right of the people in this community to preserve, foster, and promote their cultural origins and heritage. Council members, be courageous in protecting and preserving all historical markers. Do not ransom our history in order to keep the peace with left-wing radicals who wish to bully and intimidate us into submission. They will not stop with this plaque. They wish to rename streets, city parks, and school buildings. We must not negotiate or waver in our stance. The petition for removal of our plaque stands at 368 in favor of removing and 765 against its removal. That's nearly two to one. The people have spoken. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. It was not necessarily my intention to speak tonight, but I felt like I should say something. My name is Sandra Martin. I live at 8262 Mery Gardens Lane in Hebron, Maryland. There's talk about petitions that have been signed, but how valid are these petitions? Have they been looked at to see that they are true voters and that they are true property owners of Wycomico County? And the other thing is about the history. All of the history is wrong because until American history includes black history and it's combined to make the true history, then none of it is really right. We all have rights, and I do not consider anyone who wants a white supremacist just because they want the plaque removed. It is what and who you are honoring. This man killed more veterans probably than any one person, you could almost say. So, why are we honoring someone who was killing everybody? If we read our history, all of it, and then we come to an understanding of what we want Wycomico County to celebrate, then I think that the plaque would probably be removed. But until you get all the history together and all the history books in schools and everywhere, we don't get the full story, and you won't get the full story unless you go back, research it for yourself, read American history, read black history, read the Indian history, read all of the history. And I don't understand why all of these have to have a separate history. If we're Americans, it's American history. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Martin. Any other public comments?
Why don't you watch? If you'd like to come over here and...
Yeah. Thank you. You're good. Okay.
I apologize for my late arrival. I was stuck in traffic in Baltimore. Ladies and gentlemen of the council, I remain the Rabbi Alan Bailey. I spoke relatively at length last time, so I'm going to try to keep this short and highlight a few things. We can get on the Internet, as the last person said, and we can research things for ourselves, but there's always misinformation that can be gathered for either side. Let's be practical. So, what real evidence do we have? You know, there's, I got a lot of grief last time because I made the comment that Maryland was a Southern state. I was correct and incorrect at the same time. We would have been a Southern state had our politicians not been kidnapped and jailed. I have spoken to an actual history professor about these things, which I did know, but I wanted to brush up on. Unfortunately, he cannot be here tonight. That was my, that was going to be my, my big grandstanding was to get him here, but it didn't happen, so I do apologize. So, you just have to take a aging Jew. Anyhow, the Mason-Dixon line is on the north side of the state. Case closed. I don't really have to say anything else. There were over 87,000 slaves in the state of Maryland that did not get freed, not, did not get freed at the end of the Civil War. Because the end of the Civil War, only the slaves that were considered in the South were freed, and because Maryland was hijacked by Lincoln, we were, at that point, considered a part of the North. But if you take a look at any of our military installations from that time and see which way the guns are pointed, that's physical evidence in and of itself. I do agree with some arguments that they have. The status quo should be changed. There should be a way out of poverty. I had to fight like hell to come out of the ghetto, excuse my language, and work my way into the suburbs. I'm from a extremely poor area in Delaware that I'm certain no one in this room will drive through without their doors locked and their windows up. So, the status quo should be changed, right? There are issues that pertain to the black community and most minorities. I'm not excluding, you know, my people or other minorities. I'm just, that's the topic of debate, so I'm trying to stay on topic. That we should look at. There are pressing issues for this county that we should look at. You know how hard it is to start, I'm trying to start an entrepreneurship with my wife. It is nearly impossible to do that in this county. It is extremely difficult. The amount of red tape, the amount of extortion, I'm sorry, permit fees and inspections is astronomical. These are things that we could be talking about now. Property taxes, if you fall behind on your property taxes, you cannot make partial payments to catch up. So, after, I believe it's two years, the property goes to sheriff's sale. These are legitimate issues that face the lower-income, disabled people in the county that own property. I do, I am a resident. I do own property. I live on Jersey Road, if anybody wants to come by and say hi. In the last month, oh, gun laws, that was my last point on that. Gun laws were originally started to restrict blacks from having guns. They're still today aimed at the black community. These are things that we could actually have a discussion about, but we're arguing over a sign.
If I could ask you to wrap, Brown.
I'm sorry?
If I could ask you to close?
Yes.
Thank you.
So, we're here talking about a sign. I won't be more than another 60 seconds, a minute and a half. So, we're here arguing about a sign. In the last month, I've worked with a suicidal vet and a couple different relationships to help mend people, someone dealing with divorce, trying to mend relationships and hearts and minds. The amount of good and constructive things that can be done as opposed to arguing over this is unbelievable. Everything that's said at some stage could offend someone. Maryland was in the South. War monuments are for soldiers. The man was a soldier. He was a Confederate soldier. Maryland is a Confederate state, plain and simple. If you don't like the guy, that's fine. If you're offended by the guy, that's fine. If you're offended by the sign, that's fine. You can be offended and be quiet. I'm offended that I can't go to a fast food place and they put pork on everything, right? So, there's Martin Luther King, right? Martin Luther King was one of the best orators of the 20th cen, if not the best orator of the 20th century. He's my go-to guy before I give speeches. I love Martin Luther King. Martin Luther King was one of the most outspoken anti-homosexual advocates in the world at that time. So, do we strip history of Dr. King? And why? Because he had a, for lack of a better term, a not-PC attitude towards one type of person that we may or may not disagree with today.
I have to ask you to wrap?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Gandhi. Gandhi slept with young girls, prepubescent girls, to try to tempt himself to... Gandhi slept with young girls, prepubescent girls, to try to tempt himself to prove his will. You know, do we not quote the other inspirational things that he was able to do? You know, where, again, as I said last time, where does the line end with offense? Everybody can be offended about something. Have you ever been gypped out of something? Said, "No can do, no long time, no see, basket case, moron, cretin," or drinking, or the expression, "drinking the Kool-Aid." All of those phrases that are used in everyday conversation are all extremely offensive. They're all rooted, gypped comes from gypsy, jude, out of something. So there's no, when we said this, "Well, I'm offended, so you have to do what I want you to do because I'm offended." So then we have to curtail all of society and walk on bubble wrap to address a very small percentage of the people instead of saying, "Look, you know, I'm telling you as a Jew, we've been through this. We've been through this a lot more recently, all right? Our horror story goes back 75 years. We're back almost a century, over a century and a half now with the Civil War."
Rabbi, I have to give you 10 seconds, if you don't mind.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Just don't explode. The, this is not the way forward. The way forward is not division. The way forward is not segregation. The way forward is not arguing. And the way forward is to not be offended. The way forward is to let it roll off your back and move forward.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? That concludes public comments. Council comments? Councilman Kilmer?
Yeah, I mean, I think, I guess, James mentioned my name, so I guess I'll speak up here. He and I did talk a little bit about this. He is a constituent, so he called, and we don't see eye to eye on this. As I tried to explain to him, and I'll explain to anyone who asked me about this, is that I think we have a difference of opinion about what is in terms of a monument and what is a historical sign. Pretty much everyone knows I didn't grow up here. I grew up in the West. And we have a lot of historical signs in the West, and they relate to what Donna was talking about, that in the West, a lot of our historical signs are about Indian battles. And there are signs about what happened on a certain location, and usually it was some injustice done to Native Americans. Growing up, I never viewed that as a celebration of what happened at those places. It was a statement of fact. And I'm not sure what the intention was of the people that put up those signs. But you read those signs and you make up your own mind about what happened. And I think that's the uses of history, is that it explains what happened and you decide whether that was good or bad. You know, Winder, you know, we can decide for ourselves whether he's a good or bad person based on, you know, his status as a veteran, what he did to the prison camps, you know. But he was from Wycomico County. I don't view that sign as a, the same thing as, let's say, a statue that celebrates what he did. It's a marker that he was born in Wycomico County. And maybe the wording on it could be clarified, you know, maybe, you know, some of those things. But, you know, we, history is done by people and both good and bad happen, and that is what we need to wrestle with. You know, in the West, we wrestle with what was done to the Native Americans. And that, you know, in here, I mean, it was, the same things were done, but they were done 300 or 400 years ago. And, you know, there's not those sort of signs. And, you know, maybe we should have that sort of thing. Maybe, I mean, I think part of the problem is we don't have a wider commemoration of the history of Wycomico County. You know, we, you know, I think African-American history, I don't think has been properly commemorated. I mean, the Chipman Center, I don't think has a historical sign. That's a very historic building in Wycomico County. I think where we are lacking is that we don't have a wide enough discussion of the history of Wycomico County that lets us wrestle with these things in context. Removing signs is not going to help us do that. Maybe clarifying signs, maybe adding signs is a way to help us have a discussion and make our own decisions about what happened in the past. I mean, I drive by Pemberton Hall every day, taking my son to school. Pemberton Hall, I mean, if you look at the website, it talks about it was a plantation. I mean, that's where we have the Wine and Beer Fest. I mean, we are living on top of history in Wycomico County, and it's a history that is, it's a complicated history. And it's one that I think each of us needs to wrestle with, but we don't wrestle with it without, by denying that history or by, you know, taking offense at what certain signs mean, making signs into symbols. We need to look at signs as signs, as markers of our history, I think. That's my view at least. And, you know, whether we view those signs, view these things as signs of white supremacy or as signs of heritage, you know, that's a very subjective thing. And, you know, as a council, petitions, not petitions, you know, it's hard to legislate based on subjective views of things. And, you know, it's, I think we would do better to have a wider discussion about our history and how to commemorate Wycomico County history and, you know, wrestle with these ideas that, and wrestle with the things that happened here. And that would be probably more fruitful to moving our community forward than turning the sign that's out there into a symbol when it is really just a sign. And it's not a symbol of Trump or racism or even heritage. It's a historical sign, so let's view it as a historical sign. So that's, you know, Donna kind of, you know, her remark about American Indians kind of prompted me to think about that because that, where I grew up, we have all these historical signs, and I never viewed them as a celebration of the various massacres that happened out there. I'm kind of horrified when you read that stuff about what happened. And that, that's the purpose of historical signs, is to, you know, say, "This is what happened. You decide whether or not, what you think about it." And so that's where I come from on this, and I guess James left, but that's what I told him when he called me, and that's what I'll tell anyone if they ask me, my views on these sort of signs.
Thank you, Councilman Kilmer. Any other council comments? Seeing on entertainment, a motion to adjourn so that we can go into open work sessions.
Salute.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Needs adjourned. First item on the agenda is the countywide water sewer and stormwater management. I know Mr. Dallas Baker is here.
Thank you.